The April 24, 2012 meeting of the East Hampton Public School Committee. We have a busy agenda right away and we're going to move through a couple of items quickly and then move into a discussion about budget update. But we'll start with announcements. And so I just announced that the meeting's being recorded by public access cable. Got it? And now Superintendent Paul, do you have the other comments to take?
We have a number of announcements tonight, which is wonderful, about upcoming events in the district. But I want to start by announcing congratulations to Christine Savaro, Guidance Counselor at East Hampton High School, who has been selected as Masca 2011-2012 Massachusetts School Counselor of the Year. Pretty impressive award to Christine, so congratulations to her. The next school committee meetings are May 8th, May 22nd, and June 12th. There is no school April 16th through April 20th due to Patriots Day and spring break. There is a half day of school on Monday, May 7th due to teacher professional development. White Brook Middle School Jazz Night is scheduled for May 16th. Junior-Senior Prom is scheduled for Friday, May 18th at the Hotel North Hampton. There is no school on Monday, May 28th due to Memorial Day holiday. White Brook Middle School DC trip, Washington DC trip for 8th graders is scheduled for May 30th to June 1st. The all-school Spring Chorus for Peppin School is May 30th at 9:30 a.m. in the Peppin Auditorium. The all-school Spring Chorus for Center School is May 31st at 9:30 a.m. in the Peppin Auditorium. Senior outing is scheduled for Monday, June 4th. East Hampton High School Class Night Awards is scheduled for Tuesday, June 5th. The PTO Ice Cream Social, Center Peppin Book Fair, and Elementary Art Show is on June 6th at 6 o'clock p.m. at Peppin School. White Brook Middle School Fine Arts Night and Chorus Show is scheduled for June 7th. East Hampton High School Senior Harbor Cruise is scheduled for Thursday, June 7th. East Hampton High School Graduation is scheduled for Friday, June 8th. White Brook Middle School Awards Night is scheduled for June 13th. White Brook Middle School 7th and 8th Grade Field Day is scheduled for June 14th. Center Peppin Field Day is scheduled for June 15th. White Brook Middle School Grades 5, 6 Field Day is scheduled for June 15th. White Brook Middle School Drama Club Performance is scheduled for June 18th. And White Brook Middle School 8th Grade Continuation and Last Student Day is scheduled for June 20th. So we have a busy couple of months coming ahead for us.
The school committee would like to thank Kathy Lynch for helping tape tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable Stations, Channels 5, 19, and 20 is always looking for volunteers to assist in this process. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please call Greg at (413) 203-1360. Do we have some correspondence? No, although I think everyone reads the legislative bulletins and the NASC bulletins that you get, so while we don't read those into the record, I find that they're helpful. I often end up asking questions of people who know better than me. But if anyone's -- is there anyone who's not getting these? On the committee, everyone's getting them? Great, super. Okay. Then we'll move to gifts. We have a number of gifts.
A move that we vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation, the following. For the White Brook Middle School Science Fair and Ice Cream Social, proceeds were used by parent group to help spruce up White Brook. From Silver Screen Restaurant, five gift cards valued at $10 apiece. From Biggie's Supermarket, two gift cards valued at $25. From Madamo's, a gift card valued at $25. From Amy's, a gift card valued at $25. From Montam Ice Cream, free ice cream pie certificate. From Hairmasters, a free haircut certificate. From Papa George, two free large, two topping pizza certificates. From Alon Hair Salon, a $20 certificate. To Dive Forward, two $20 gift cards. Tropical Tanned, six tanning sessions valued at $50, right in time for spring. Luther's Co-op LLC, two gift cards valued at $25. They've got some good entertainment, and they serve beer and wine now. Burger King Restaurant, 10 gift cards valued at $5 each. Antonio's Pizza and Wings, five gift cards valued at $5 each. For the East Hampton High School With the People trip, Rebecca Mander, Madeira, sorry, $10. Lois and Sarah Cohen, $25. The Sinkowitz Family, $25. Sue Wilson, $25. Sharon and Wayne Cleary, $50. Burger King FPS Incorporated, $641.21. And that's probably the proceeds from one of those food nights where a portion of it goes. That's wonderful. That's a great way to fund things. Alfred E. Ipper, $50. For the AHS Dog Show, donations from Webster Hook Incorporated, that's Webster's Fish Hook Restaurant, $50. From Florida Savings Bank, $150. Mary Kate Murray DBA Furze a Flying Pet Women, $100. Waves, $50. And Think and Paris Insurance Agency Incorporated, $50.
Motion made and seconded. Before we vote, just wanted to commend all of the businesses and individuals on the gift list tonight. And then on many nights, we often get to read a large number of contributors in the community who share the results of their hard effort and hard work in support of various programs related to the public schools. And I think it's wonderful to see so many names supporting, you know, science, civics, the dog show, you know, and organizations. We got to see a wonderful new business in the community. Our last meeting was working, creating an internship program that was very successful for, you know, students at East Hampton High School. So I just wanted to note that it always, I always take great heart from what we see when we go through these gift lists. That said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. So now a budget update. Superintendent Paul, do you have new or updated information for us to look at in terms of the budget?
I have updated information. It's not final information at this point, but I can give you some approximations. So we find ourselves in an unfortunate situation this year. The school committee has voted to approve a level services budget of 17.8 million with a request for a city contribution of 15.5 million. Preliminary numbers from the mayor indicate that there will be a gap of approximately $690,000 in funding for the schools this year. This means cuts to the school's budget totaling approximately $690,000 will need to be made. At leadership team meetings, administrators have begun the process of identifying and prioritizing budget cuts. Approximately six staff positions will have to be cut, an administrative position will be reduced, and cuts to programs, services, and instructional materials will need to be made. These cuts follow upon last year's cuts, which totaled $842,500. It is important for the community to understand that making these cuts does not support our goals and vision for the future of the East Hampton Public Schools. Despite the challenges we face with the budget this year, we continue to envision a school district that provides a 21st century education for all students in East Hampton. An education that prepares students for careers in the global economy of the 21st century. An education that includes the study of world languages and culture from kindergarten to grade 12. An education that integrates the latest technology into daily instruction for all students. I was in a high school chemistry class this morning where the teacher had the students working collaboratively on researching controversial issues that confront citizens of East Hampton: nuclear power, biomass, hydrogen-fueled cars, wind turbines. Teams of students collaborated on the project with every student sitting in front of a laptop, doing research, and using Google Docs to answer questions on an article they were reading. The teacher was using an iPad to go into Google Docs to write comments on the students' work. Students are also able to read different articles and share information with each other. They can work on this project through Google Docs with a teacher and with their team in school and at home, too. In first grade, we have improved student engagement and reading by using donated iPads for reading instruction. Our goal is to be able to have the resources to provide this kind of experience for every student in East Hampton. In 2011, members of the city council and school committee, business and community members, teachers, and administrators came together to create a new strategic plan for the district. An envisioning session produced these statements about what we want for the future of the East Hampton Public Schools, and I'm quoting from the statements that came out of that envisioning process. "Students actively using interactive whiteboards and technology-embedded instruction. Every student has an iPad-like learning device for learning. Virtual learning is accessible to supplement student needs. Instructional coaches are added specifically to embed technology in instruction. One-to-one computer system. All buildings are state-of-art technology spaces. Schools have adequate staffing that is accountable. Hired world language teachers and exchange programs. K-12 building of a second language. Well-defined curriculum and a variety of resources. Well-articulated set of 21st century skills common to all areas. Activities such as using the pool, new fields, football, baseball, for all students to grow into whole adults." This is the vision we have for our East Hampton students, that we are able to provide the experiences and technology to ensure that our students leave the East Hampton schools ready to take on the challenges of the 21st century. And we want to stress that we have not lost sight of this vision. Thank you.
Do any members of the school committee have clarifying questions for the superintendent about the budget numbers that we've just heard, or anything else in that report? Any questions? I just wanted to confirm one piece. The 780,000 approximate gap turns into 690,000 because we use choice funds? Am I following that correctly, or am I missing a step?
No, it's because, from the time that we had that initial number, you know, we have made changes to the budget based on tuitions in and tuitions out and other items that Mr. Pickett can talk about when he comes to the podium.
The final request for full funding ended up being 15,702-123.
Right.
Which was the number on a spreadsheet that we got last meeting?
15.7, right?
15,702-123, right. So that was the final request after the adjustments were made for tuition changes and things that we learned between then and now, then and then.
And you anticipate that the number's going to be closer to 15 million at this stage?
That appears to be what it will be. I mean, I go about it from a different angle, but the result is the same.
Okay. Right. Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Peter, are we going to move from this point to a discussion of the override situation? Or should we talk about that now?
Yeah, that's what's next on the agenda. I just wanted to be sure that there were any clarifying questions about the budget numbers, or if anyone had any questions from our most recent meeting on the 17th, where we looked through a lot of different data in an effort to get to really wrap our heads around what this would mean in terms of what we're looking at. So that's the next item, unless there are other questions. So, okay. So why don't we move to a discussion, then, of the budget as a whole and the override initiative that's been undertaken by parents in the community? And then we'll have an opportunity, after that, we'll have an opportunity to hear from anyone who's here, let the public speak on that as well.
Could I start us off?
Sure.
Okay. I just thought it might be a good idea to say a few words to start, because I was outspoken at our last budget work session about expressing concerns about proceeding with an override to fill that budget gap. And while I'm 100% supportive of our needs and wanting to fully fund our programs and our schools, and very pleased to see parents out there wanting to do the same and feeling very encouraged about all of that, I had some significant concerns about proceeding based on my experience with overrides in the past in this city, and based on my hope for an override in the future for a new elementary school. And I have to say, you know, after listening to Nancy talk about our vision and our future, I would like to see us, rather than focus an override on filling a budget gap, to meet needs at a bare minimum, which represents years of cuts. I have concerns about our ability, quite honestly, to pass something like that in the community. And I think it's tough to ask people to increase their taxes or spend more money to provide services that are kind of our bare minimum services, a bare minimum service level. I think people might have a hard time getting excited about that and getting their arms around that and saying, you know, this is really something that we should spend additional money on, when it's not really an exciting place to be in the bigger picture. And I listened to Nancy talk about our vision for the district and what we'd like to see and what would be ideal, what would be really great for our kids, to provide the kind of education we'd like to provide for them and meet the vision that we have for our kids. And what I'd like to suggest is that we go forward, that we support the idea of an override, if parents are interested in taking up that cause, but that we do that at a level that would support our vision. Do that at a level that would support, yes, that would bridge that gap and give us the funding that we've lived with for the last year or two to provide those basic services, but that we go beyond that and look for funding to support our vision, and look for the funding to support the technology piece, to support the world languages from grades K through 12. And I think our community, I honestly believe in my heart that our community could get really excited about that and really feel good about, okay, you know, looking at a tax increase to support something very positive and very exciting for our community. And really, we've seen so much support from our families, our parents, from our community members, for our school system in recent years. I think people feel excited and passionate about our schools. And I think if we put forward a request to fund ourselves at a level that goes beyond filling a gap, but that could really provide the services that we'd like to see for our kids, and I think it would be a great investment for our children, a great investment for the community, and I could really envision our community getting excited about that and having that be a terrific goal to have for an override situation. So I just wanted to share my thoughts with you on that.
Great, thank you. Other comments?
First of all, Debbie, thank you so very much for sharing those thoughts, because, you know, after discussing with you your concerns, I had the same concerns, but how you worded that way, I appreciate that. With missing last week's meeting, my question is, when would these override funds be available? Are they available for this September? Or is, did I understand right, it would be a November ballot question, and it wouldn't even come into effect this year?
That's my understanding, that it would be a November ballot question.
The determining agent is the city council. And so only the city council could tell you for sure, but I would suggest that there'd be some resistance to appropriating money for special election. Some desire to take advantage of the fact that the November election's pretty significant, and we do have room on the ballot for up to three questions, and so it could go on. And that would mean that once the voters approved it, if it was successful, funding requests would have to go to city council and be approved. Because although the voters would have voted yes to raise the taxes, you can't raise the taxes until you're spending the money, and so the appropriation has to happen as well. And that would likely take into December. Acting judiciously, they could probably get an approval in December, so the money would be available after the holidays? I guess would be a fair way to put it. I don't think you'd have any use for it in early December, but it would become available probably in January.
So what that would mean to us as a school district is that we would have to go ahead and make the cuts that we're anticipating we're going to have to make for the beginning of the school year. But if the override were passed and the funds became available to us, we could begin to put things back for the second semester and carry that money over into the following year to help us, you know, continue to put things back and to move in the direction of our vision.
And we, I'm sure the discussion came out, so this money would stay with us for second, third, fourth, fifth year?
Would, it would with me. I can't predict what other budget writers might do. The law would not require it to stay. So just so you understand, I mean, it's required the first year, but after that, and the first year, you know, you might want to also, as we discuss it, maybe only half of the total were appropriated, but it's only half a year, so it would have a different sort of an impact on budgeting, on the tax rate, that sort of thing. But I'm fairly certain that if the voters approved an override for, to increase the piece of the pie, to use a phrase, that the school department's direct appropriation becomes, that, you know, there'd be an awful lot of political and public pressure for whoever's in the mayor's office to continue that commitment. But I couldn't speak beyond myself. I would be happy to leave it in the budget for as long as I was writing budgets.
Right. But it's not legally required.
After the first year, that's correct.
Or do other members of the school committee wish to comment on the question of the override?
Do we have, like, an update as to where the stance, like, so we truly have a community outreach group that's ready to run with this? We have that sense?
Well, I believe we have public speak coming up, so perhaps we want to have that.
So we have that sense.
Yeah, I would very much like to hear from the public that's present, if they're here to speak on that. And then I'd have a little bit more of a sense.
Great.
So let me just, if I might, like, I come about this from a little different angle. I'm trying to figure out how much we can move here and there. So I come at it that the increase directly to the school department's about 287,000. And the total increase for education spending this year is about 548,000. So although it doesn't meet the goal, there's another little over half a million dollars in tax money that's coming into education in the community. It doesn't change the picture that the school superintendent and the school committee see, because not, as you see, not all that money is available to run programs in the district.
Right. We still face the gap that we face.
Just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No question?
I just wanted to clarify, I think I understood Nancy, but because of this gap that we will not have at the start of the school year, you will have to cut faculty?
That's right.
Even, no matter how successful the override is?
That's right, because we won't know until November. We have to have our programs and people in place by September when the school doors open.
Truly, if you took a chance, you'd end up laying two faculty members off to make up for it in the second half of the year.
Right, right. I understand, you can't gamble that kind of, with someone's job, so.
Other questions?
I just wanted to make one other comment.
One comment, yeah.
Looking at this situation in terms of what our goal is for an override, whether our goal would be to fund a vision versus filling a budget gap, and I just wanted to just throw out for thought for everyone that I saw, as I explained earlier, I saw the first scenario of just filling a budget gap as kind of a campaign that's based in negativity in the sense of, you know, we need, we're going to have these cuts, these cuts, these cuts, these cuts, these cuts. And I see a request for an override that funds our vision as something quite exciting and positive in the sense that there's all these benefits. We just have tremendous benefits to gain. We have so much to win. It's just such an exciting opportunity. So I just see them as very different scenarios, and so I just wanted to share that with you. It's playing through my mind, you know, two very different kinds of feelings to an override. And I think, quite honestly, I think we stand a chance, a good chance maybe, with a vision fund, an override to fund a vision. I don't feel confident in an override to fund, just fill deficits. So anyway, I realize I've kind of rambled on about this, but I just wanted to completely share my thoughts.
Other comments or questions before we move to public speak? I just wanted to, you all set? Okay. I just wanted to clarify, Mike, on that observation, because I'm, I believe you hear something 10 times, you finally get it. When you talk about the $287,000, that's direct, and then the 500-plus thousand, that would include?
The 287.
Sorry. The 287 would be direct into school program. The 500,000 overall increase would include benefits?
Yeah, a couple of things. It includes increases in charter that we're seeing on the cherry sheet. It takes into account a $50,000 loss in Medicare revenue that the school would normally earn, but because of changes in the program, the way it's reimbursed, they're not going to earn it. We're actually going to have to absorb a big piece of that hit in the current fiscal year, but that won't affect the school's current budget. But in the future, I have to project what looks accurate, and the number we used to use didn't. And a few, yeah, there's probably some change in benefits. Once I produce the document, I'll have the comparison sheets, and we can look at this year's and last year's and see exactly which lines the other piece. But I'm thinking that those two items are the majority of that 200.
The charter numbers and the Medicare changes. Okay. That's really, of the other 240,000 plus?
Right.
Right. Okay. Yeah, thank you. I just, I think that it's hard to answer questions for citizens, and I don't want to always just refer them to the superintendent and the mayor.
Oh, no.
If I could start with a working knowledge of how to respond to what some of these numbers mean, and that's helpful, so I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments before we move to public speak, and then we can return to conversation amongst ourselves? All right. Well, then, let's do that. Let's go to the public speak. At this point in the meeting, we would invite anyone who's here who would like to speak to come to the podium, to tell us who you are briefly, and share your thoughts with us. We welcome your ideas.
Hi.
I brought my coffee up. Tamara Smith. I live on Strong Street. I have five kids in the school district, and I've been one of the parents who have been talking about the override. I need some clarification from you at this point, so I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I'm not quite sure if what you're saying is that the school committee is supporting an override, or if this would still be a private enterprise on the behalf of parents that the school committee knows about. And that that's important, because the city council has basically told us that without the support of the school committee, they would not support an override. So if it's just the parents on our own within a meeting saying that's a good idea, but without official support, that obviously has very different ramifications. So that would be my first question.
Oh, and let me back up in terms of procedure, and so that everyone understands this and it's not different in any case. What I think we'll do, if it's helpful for you, is for you to ask the questions, and then, to the extent that we can in our subsequent conversation, we'll try to answer them. So between Sue and I, we'll try to get these questions down. I'm taking notes, too, it's okay, we're good. And we'll try to address them, but we don't always have the capacity to address them immediately on the spot, but we'll try to be as helpful as we can. So, and I understand that question, I think, I think we all do, so.
The reason, another reason that I ask that, just to give you an idea of our timeframe, is that for this question, for the override to go to the city council, our deadline would be that we would have to give them a formal letter by tomorrow. So within the next 12 hours, we would have to get this letter together, and I would love to know if it's a letter coming from parents or parents in conjunction with the school committee. So that's my question.
I know it's not usual. I need to ask a question.
I heard that from the, I got this letter from Peter Marks, who is another parent who was meeting and went to the city council, and said that he spoke with Daniel Rist. He has a follow-up, he has a follow-up call with Daniel Rist.
Thank you, that's enough. I think that the, that, that statement answers the question, when can I get it on the next meeting? And about, the, the agenda for the next meeting closes tomorrow.
Right.
I, I would hope that they weren't going to hold anyone to a standard of meeting this kind of time to, to make a vote that had to be made by the middle of August.
Right.
So I, I don't, I, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
I think that that's not the drop dead date to get it on the ballot, I think it's the drop dead date if you want to get it on their next meeting. And whether or not it has to be on our next meeting is, I mean, it could be, maybe it needs to be, I don't know. But they, they meet twice a month, in May, and once in June, July, and August, so.
Right, that was my understanding as well, in the limited conversations that I had had with the city.
Well, if the school committee decides to move forward tonight, that's fine.
Right, I, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think we have a sense that there's some urgency with this, and that the, the city council needs time to consider the question, and to consider everyone's input into the question. But I would agree with your sense that the deadline that you've been told about may be about getting it onto the very next city council meeting.
It, yes, to clarify, it would be to get onto the agenda, to be able to speak for the meeting on May 16.
Okay, all right. So I think we'll take that into our consideration as well.
Okay. And the next question that I would have for clarification is that as a parent, and not as a politician, or someone who's familiar with the overall school budget, I would certainly be interested in knowing who would be generating these numbers for an override budget, if that will fall to my shoulders as a parent. And if so, who do I go to to get any information about these numbers? Because a lot of that is relatively closed information, and knowing that we're on such a tight deadline, working as individual parents, that's been a real difficult part of the process, is being able to speak the speak, essentially. So, just another question.
Sure. And one that we'll address.
My third question is, our rights as parents, in terms of distributing literature that would inform the town about this, I don't want to be doing anything illegal. We have thought of the whole process of coming up with a Facebook page, which would tell people about what we're, why the override would be coming up, what would it be supporting. And we were also hoping to write some op-eds that would generate this. At this point, we haven't done this, because we've, we've been aware that we're not quite sure of the budget, and not trying to cause mass hysteria. We've been trying to hold out to see what the actual budget numbers are. But regardless of whether or not the school committee as a whole does support this endeavor, I am simply stating that as a private citizen who lives in East Hampton, I would really need to have guidance as to what my rights are as a citizen. One of my concerns is that when we've gone to talk to various officials within the city, we've gotten mixed results of what we can and cannot do. For example, at one point, we were told by the city clerk, that as private citizens, we are not allowed to request an override budget, that it had to come through the school committee. We were later told by other people that that was not true. So just getting to the bottom of the, the fair process involved here, and being organized about it, would be most appreciative, appreciated. And I'm really happy if you're considering an override budget. I'm very hopeful for the education of my children, and very hopeful that our economy will eventually go on an upswing. And as someone who lives in the town, the city, I certainly can understand that it's hard to talk about money, but it's also hard to talk about not giving our children the vision that we have promised, so, so I'm, I'm happy for that. So, I guess that's all I have to say right now. Can you think of anything else that we needed to have addressed immediately? Okay, oh, that was the other part. I had one more question. In terms of schools, is it, is, I just wanted to see from the school committee if it's correct that we would not be able to send any literature home, if we were to photocopy it ourselves and distribute it to children? Or if we could include that as a newsletter, just as an information, not saying, "Support an override," or "Don't support an override," but simply education, educating people about what the override would be?
Yeah, and that's a question that I'm going to take under advisement, because I'm having a flashback to third grade in Seattle, Washington, and knowing that it was okay to say "Vote schools," but not to say that it was okay to vote "Yes" for the increased funding for the schools. And walking some fine line, I was in third grade, all I remember is that we were so excited that we got to do that instead of whatever it was, reading, writing, or something else. But I, I understand the importance of the question, and I think we can get an answer for you, if not precisely this evening. I think I have a general sense of what the answer is, and there are restrictions as to what you can do.
Well, I think we have someone on the school committee who has a lot of expertise about that.
Direct experience in all of that.
Yes.
So, okay. Well, we'll try to answer all of those questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else care to speak this evening? Terrific, we got two next.
Hi, I'm Michelle Downer, resident of East Hampton. I have six children. In the East Hampton school system, and I am not nearly as versed as Tamara is, but I just wanted to get up and say thank you for your, the words that you use as far as our children being a vision. It's like everybody keeps talking about numbers and the cuts, and what's going to be cut, but what it comes down to is, it's all about our children. It's a vision. And to make the cuts that they're forecasting, they're talking about cutting foreign language, and they're talking about cutting classes, you know, our children are very well-rounded, so they're not, they don't know what they're going to miss. But me, as a parent, I know what they're going to miss. And I'm, they're not going to be able to go ahead in life as well as they could without these people and these classes in place. And it, and it is a vision, you know, so I'm hoping that, that they, that you do vote for the override. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Casey Young. I'm a fifth grader at White Buck Middle School. Well, my question was, is if there's going to be six teachers cut, which teachers are going to be cut? How are the principals going to know who to cut, and how is it going to be done fairly? Because knowing from what my strand is, I'm in the Dolphins, I don't have a lot of kids in my strand, but at the other strands, there's a lot more teachers than in mine, so I don't know who's going to get cut and how it's going to turn out. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
That's a question for the superintendent. I apologize, I didn't get your full name. Can you?
Michelle Downer.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would care to speak tonight? Speak for you. Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Downer, and Ms. Young.
Ms. Casey.
That's terrific. We'll close the public speak and return to further comment by members of the school committee. Other folks have other questions that they wanted to.
So for clarification, city council meets on May 2nd and May 16th, and you, we really would need to get into one of those, I think, to give them ample time. The agenda for the May 5th, 2nd meeting closes on the 26th, so essentially tomorrow. And it closes on the 10th, or the 9th, I'm sorry, the 9th, for the 16th meeting.
You're saying 5-9?
5-9.
Thanks.
And so, and so there is, there is a little time. You don't, we would not have to absolutely rush to get into tomorrow, unless one wanted to make sure they got on the 5-2 meeting. But you could make the 5-16 meeting.
Right.
As long as we had something for the city council, whether or not.
Okay, so, I've got an answer then to, I, I, my number system was different. I had at, at least four questions that I heard.
Just so the committees are aware, this is the school committee, meets again on May 8.
Correct, thank you. We meet on May 8. Thanks. Okay, so, I'm trying to organize these in order. I, I think that the actual budget information would come, is that correct, Nancy? That would come from your office in terms of precise numbers and prices associated with making the vision of some of the things that have been mentioned so far, but the actual dollars would come out of your office?
That's correct. However, I think the school committee certainly could have a voice in that. I can give you the exact numbers for maintaining what we currently have, and I can give you scenarios for, you know, providing funds to meet our vision, different aspects of our vision. But I certainly think that the school committee would want to have a voice in that as well, in terms of what, what you would wish to request.
Yeah, I guess what I'm suggesting is, in, in first everyone's service, but also from Ms. Smith's question, is that once we give you a sense of our plans and expectations, you can then come back to us, say, here's what scenario A looks like, here's what scenario B looks like, which provides us information, and provides the parents who are interested in override information.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
And any expected cost or impact to the taxpayer would really be something that we'd get from the finance director through my office. Once we knew the number, none of that could be exact, but it would be based on this year's numbers. So if it were added to this tax year, which it wouldn't be, but that's the way we would provide a number, and that's the legitimate way that Department of Revenue would like us to do that. So that would be, that would not be a difficult thing to say how many cents per thousand a given number might be on the tax rate, if it were passed. And that wouldn't be something that any of the, any of the citizens would need to come up with. It would be a number they could use.
Right.
And it would be a legitimate number that came from a legitimate source.
Okay. A question on, on that same?
No, not on that same.
Okay, I just want to, can I go?
Okay, keep going on that.
Just for a second, just so that we cut there, because I understood one of the other questions to be concerning the rights of parents in distributing information, and what the proper process is to follow. So what do we have for advice there? So no missteps.
Let's do that one to the.
That blusie I will speak about.
Just to explain my background, I've been involved, intimately involved in two recent overrides in our city. One in 2005, which was to fund architectural drawings for a potential new elementary school and a new high school, under a previous organizational system for school building projects in the state of Massachusetts. And then, and it was a successful override in 2005. And then I was involved in 2010, as chairperson of the Committee for Better Schools, in, in passing an override for funding the, the city's balance of funding for a new high school. And, and that was successful as well in 2010. So I've been, I've lived the process twice, and, and have been very close to the whole process. And one of the first things to do is to establish a ballot question committee. And there, there is a lot to be aware of in terms of the, the legal aspects of what can and cannot be done by a ballot question committee. For example, in response to your first question about distributing information in the schools, you're not allowed to do that. In fact, a ballot question committee cannot even meet in a public building unless they're paying for the use of that space. There's a lot of, lot of rules and regulations in terms of what a ballot question committee can and cannot do legally. Cannot disseminate any information in any public place, actually.
Just to, just to clarify that, because some people don't understand what public place means, if I'm interested in supporting the override, and I'm down at the soccer fields, it's a public park, I can distribute information there?
No.
No, you can't. No, you can't.
Good to know. Good to know.
So there's, there's a lot of details in terms of what is allowed and what isn't. And what I did before we got started the last time around is I had lengthy conversations with, I think it's at the Office of Campaign Finance and Budget in Boston, and they were immensely helpful to me in, in making it very clear and providing me with all the information of what you can and cannot do legally. And if you ever have questions along the way, they're great at answering questions, too. And I'd be happy to sit down with a group of parents to share what I know about overrides, what I've learned, and share some of that information and that contact information. I'd be happy to share anything that might be helpful to you. One thing I can say is that the longer time, the better lead time for passing an override, I think. I, I just would caution to strive for a longer window of time to, to make something like this happen, as opposed to a short window of time. Because what, what we have found in the past is we need to fundraise to have the money available to do the educational programs that you'd like to do to educate the community about the need and the goals and the vision. And it, it takes quite a bit of resources to be able to provide a, a solid educational component to the community, and I think that that's critical for success. And so it takes time to provide, to, to fundraise, to be able to get your resources, to then put forth a pretty strong educational component to the community. So it's quite an elaborate, long process, but I'm, I'm happy to share information and suggestions along the way. Happy to meet with you, or to do whatever I can to help.
That, Debbie, thanks, because that answered one of the questions that I had, and I thought I knew the answer, and you gave it very clearly. In other words, the school committee tonight could vote overwhelmingly to support this override, but we have no finances to contribute to it.
That's correct. Correct.
So there is no, in our enthusiasm or in our support, that does not mean we are financially able to Xerox flyers, even. I mean.
Personally, we could do anything we'd like.
Right, right, if, right, but as a committee.
Not with public, not with public resources of any sort.
Right, exactly.
And it makes it challenging, it definitely makes it challenging. Possible, but challenging.
Right. Yeah, it's good to know. Hindsight's 2020, because I was clearly solicited at Nantucket in relation to the, one of the two. So I, maybe that law's been changed.
You can be by individual, but the.
Oh, no, this was a table, whole setup shebang, so I must have my, I'm confused if the law's changed, or we dodged a bullet, which is okay. It's good to get clarification on this, because I was laboring under misperception. The, the biggest question here is the last one and the first one that was asked. Does the schools committee support the override? And I don't know if anyone wants to comment on that this evening, or urge us to take any action this evening.
Well, and Peter, I wonder before you address that question, if I could address Casey's question.
Yes, that would be good, Nancy.
I thought that it's important that I address your question, Casey. We have not made any decisions yet about which teaching positions will be eliminated. We're looking at teaching positions across the district, and as we make those choices, it's made by the whole team of administrators together, along with me. We look at class sizes, because we want to try to maintain our small class sizes as much as possible. We look at programs, we want to try to not eliminate programs. So the cuts would occur across the district, probably a cut or so at each level, elementary, middle school, and high school. But none of those decisions have made, been made at this point in time. Some of the positions might be classroom teachers, some of the positions might be support personnel. We just, we are not at the point to make those yet. But trust me that we do look at every detail, including, I think, the one that you're concerned about, which is those large class sizes. We want to try to make sure that we maintain the class sizes that we have now to the greatest degree possible. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you add just one piece, that it's not the individual, it's the position, and the individual may have another teaching position somewhere else because of the way the contract works?
Yes, thank you, Mike. So it is positions that we eliminate. As you know, we do have teachers retiring every year, so sometimes teachers retire, we eliminate a position, and that teacher is able to take a position of a teacher who's retired. Or our veteran teachers who've been here for a number of years, because we, in our contract, we have seniority rights. Veteran teachers have rights to positions that they're certified for over teachers who are new to our district. So I, I think that there are a, a number of factors that come into play, and we consider all of those in, in making these decisions.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks for.
Could I just make one other comment, too?
Yep.
Just jumping back to a comment.
Just jumping back to a comment that you made, Peter, about the soccer fields. I just wanted to, just for clarification, say that the Committee for Better Schools was very, very, very much aware and very diligent about not breaching any, any laws at all, very conscientious about that. And what may be the case is it may be the school building committee is a city committee and they, they operate under a totally different set of rules. And so maybe there might have been an instance where a school building committee effort was handled on a soccer field or something, but it wouldn't have been the Committee for Better Schools, official Committee for Better Schools business.
And as such, the school committee can take a position and provide detailed information about its position, but it really can't use its resources to say yes or no. But it can say adding a world language teacher will probably cost X number of dollars and it would serve these, this number of students at this grade. That's perfectly legitimate. That's, that is the detail behind the cost estimate. That's very legitimate for the city to put out in any way it needs to, provided it's not tied to saying yes on a ballot question.
In other words, I should speak for myself and not for the whole committee. I would need a little education.
This Office of Campaign and Political Finance is a wonderful resource for anyone, including a question that might come from the entire committee or questions from individual committee members. They, they really are a wonderful, wonderful resource and their job is to keep us all out of trouble. They really want, they don't want to deal with us. They, they would like to answer our questions.
Right.
And they want to be done with it.
Yes.
So they'd like us to get it right the first step. Or the second.
Well, I think that it is important for me as a member of the school committee to know what, what I can contribute and what I cannot contribute as far as support of an override. I think I certainly can understand tonight that as a member of the school committee, I can advocate for us to formally support the parents' desire to proceed with an override. And if I understand everything that we have said tonight and everything that I have heard tonight, this formal support on the committee, school committee's behalf, will aid them, will aid the parents committee, I don't know what it's going to be called yet, but will aid this committee, enable them to proceed to the next step, enable them to proceed to the step of dealing with the city council. And, and in that sense, I can certainly advocate that we do that, that tonight the school committee formally support the parents' move for an override. And in that formal support, I'd also be thinking in the back of my mind, thanks to Debbie, that there is so much that might need to be done. And there may be so much more that needs to be done that just possibly, even with our formal support and with incredible parent enthusiasm, it may not be able to happen. Once everything, you know, everyone sits down and says, wait a minute, A, B, C and D and E and F, we can't do it quite yet. But I don't know that we're at the stage that we know that. So I have no, I have, I can't think of any reason to not add my support as a school committee member for them to be able to keep moving and see what can happen.
Thank you. Other comments?
I would, I would suggest that it would be better for the effort if the school committee voted to request of the city council the, the override question and allow the support group to become legs for that request as opposed to having the parents go in and make the ask. I honestly think it's, it's more appropriate for the school committee to make the ask. The school committee member or two ought to be involved in the process than this left to be involved in the, in the ballot question committee. But I think it would be a stronger ask if the school committee asked for it as opposed to just supporting the parents who are interested in having that extra money spent in the school system. And that's just my personal view. It's certainly not a requirement, but I, I think it is a much stronger statement on behalf of the school committee.
I would, I would be interested too to have us have some definition to exactly what the extent of the override we're supporting. You know, it has some, some clarity. As I mentioned before, I think it's going to be a much tougher situation and there are two different, there are two different scenarios and two different ballgames if you just go for filling a budget gap versus supporting a vision. I think there are two very different scenarios and I, I think they have very different potentials for passing. And I think there's a different scenario that could play out with either one. And so I'd like to see us have some definition to exactly what type of override we're talking about before voting.
That's the tough part for me because I don't know that. I don't know, I don't, I don't have an answer for that. Could I ask a question then? So are you asking if the override is just to fill a gap or if it's to promote a vision?
Exactly.
You just want to define it one way or the other?
Exactly. I feel comfortable.
Not necessarily specific.
Right. And I realize we wouldn't have specific numbers tonight.
Okay.
But in terms of even supporting the vision, supporting one or the other or, or an override, I'd, I'd like clarity on which it is we're talking about.
Is there, is there any interest in settling that particular question so that the continued conversation can focus on how or whether? I have a sense, but I don't want to speak for anyone else on the committee. I, I think I've, I've heard you, Nancy, say that what Deb suggested earlier, but maybe which part of what she said were you speaking to?
Well, I, I was really speaking to the, Debbie's experience for what it takes to be involved, what the steps are.
Oh, okay.
As far as an override are concerned. That's what I was talking about. Because I, I was not anywhere near as familiar as Debbie is with what all has to be done. I mean, I just had this vague idea. And I, I just in, you know, the three minutes that you spoke Debbie, I got a much clearer vision of what all this means as far as work, action.
It's a lot of work, a lot, lot of work. And I have a list, you know, in my files at home, I probably have a list, several pages, single spaced of all the things that we did as a committee to either raise money to support an educational effort or all the educational efforts that we did in the outreach in the community and the variety of ways you need to reach out to the community. I could tell you I devoted every ounce of my life to that campaign for six months for the last override.
And it took that amount of time, correct?
Oh, it did. It did. We didn't have extra time to spare exactly because you need to raise the money to be able to produce the educational campaign. And the, and I just would, would really stress, I think, an educational component, a thorough educational component that encompasses a variety of methods of reaching people is critical to success.
Should we return to the, to the question of the definition for purposes of furthering the conversation? I mean, I think.
I think we need to.
Yeah. So what, what is the sense of the committee about the question that Deb has asked? I think it's pretty clear what, what Deb's view on that is. That's the, which way?
I, I would support funding a vision. That's what I would support. But I do have a question. In order to go to the council either on May 2nd or May 16th, don't we need numbers? I'm confused as to what we would be going to the city council for because it seems like we need numbers to say, this is what we're looking for. Are we just going to ask that we'd like a ballot question and we'll be back in a couple of months with a number? I'm guessing not.
I don't think that's the, you're right, yes.
So it seems like we have to do a lot of work.
Yes, ultimately, numbers are very precisely called for in the language of, of a ballot question.
I think you could get on the, you could get on the agenda with a request for an override to fund visions of a, a public school system, however you want to say that. But I do think that by the time the subcommittee that it got assigned to met, which is probably going to be finance, you ought to have good numbers. An unknown vision, something you can easily demonstrate. So yes and no, we can go forward without a hard number, but not for very long. You know, a couple of weeks maybe.
But we could go forward tomorrow to put it on the agenda without hard numbers is what you're saying.
That's correct. And you'd probably need hard numbers for the finance committee meeting that would happen between the first and second meeting in May.
Peter, I need to ask a point of order.
Yes.
May we ask a question of a public speak?
Sure, sure. We can invite someone to come back up to the, to podium and, and help inform us at any point. Would you like to do that?
Well, perhaps let me propose my question and see maybe we don't need to do that. But I don't think I am aware of just how big of a movement this is. In other words, how many parents are in the, right now in the pool for working on this? I know that we have heard from two tonight and I know that we heard from one at our last school committee meeting. So, you know, that may represent 50, I don't know. But how many parents are there that are on board for this override now?
Yep. And I think we can. You're better, you don't even remember the law. I'm thinking of Alabama and asking the NAACP to turn over its membership list and we can ask.
I don't think we're quite.
I don't, I just want to be careful that I don't make a mistake. I couldn't make any mistakes, so I, I guess.
One could, one could.
You can get a number without asking for individuals.
One could just wildly ask, are there more than a dozen parents involved in this?
Right.
All right, that helped me a lot. Thank you.
That, that was an easy one.
And just on that topic, I'd like to just add a point. Here I am talking about the effort I put into this past override. I'd like to say that we had the committee, we had a core group. Ladonna was one of those people. We had a core group of, I would say, a good, hardworking 20 people that devoted outrageous amounts of time to the effort throughout the six month period we worked in. I mean, a real strong, strong core group of people that worked hard. And then we probably had, as a member of, other members of the Committee for Better Schools, we had a membership support list of about 150 people that supported the cause that helped us in some way, some piece of the campaign somewhere along the way. They were helpful and supportive. So it was a, it was quite a, an effort by a lot of people the last two times. I didn't want to minimize that. I wanted to share that with you.
Well, that helped me, once again, that helped me, yeah.
I think, I think that I've heard a sense from, from, from Deb, from Lori, still, I just don't want to speak for anyone here about this question of definition and maybe we don't need to keep coming back to it, but are we, Nancy, is the vision or balancing a budget deficit question one that you want to speak to the definition of that at this stage? And then Ladonna, would you like to speak to it?
Ladonna, you want to?
Sure. It's definitely promoting a vision. I've always thought of it as promoting a vision because I haven't, I've never thought of it as just funding this year's budget. It's always been, in my mind, helping future years and just, you know, making our budget and our big, the city's whole pie much bigger so we can continue to be a good school district and provide quality education. So definitely promoting a vision.
Great. Okay. So that sounds like we have three who so far are out there saying that they support the idea of a vision. Do you want to add to that group, Mike or Nancy?
Well, I, I think that's the message.
Yeah.
It really is. You, you know, we talk in budget terms about whether the budget will fill all the holes or not. But in budget terms, we're talking about finite numbers that can't be expanded any, any further than our best estimates as to how much things will, will bring in for, for income. This really, it's, it's, it's a sell. I mean, we enjoy one of the lowest tax burdens in the valley, in East Hampton, and a lot of people cherish that. And so they're, you know, I don't know where the vote will come out, but, but clearly, if you look at other communities, the, the property owners in those communities have got more in the game than, than the property owners here. And they get a different level of service because there's more in the game. Now, I think we do a great job across the board, but more money would provide an opportunity for a different, a different outlook, or maybe that's not the right term. I don't want to say different outcome either because our outcomes are good, but a more rounded opportunity for the, for the children in the school system. And I think that's a much easier or a much more appropriate way to ask people to contribute more money is to contribute money to, to allow us to achieve this good thing. And so it really is a matter of how you say it and really what you mean by it. And, and I think that's the only way that you're going to be able to pass an override. Debt exclusions are a little different. People look at them differently. They're limited, they go away. This one's permanent and so it puts a permanent boost in the tax rate. And it would move us from 13 or 14 out of 15 to, you know, maybe 12. But what I'll do is try to do all that calculation once we have some idea of numbers, just to get a sense as to how we would fall. It's fairly easy to do, so.
Well, perhaps we have the name of our committee already. I don't know, somewhere, vision in it. And I think in, in many ways, and I, I was trying to put this more eloquently, but in many ways, I don't think that it will matter to me what we call it because it will be a vision. It will be fulfilling the vision. But I, I agree with, with especially when Debbie started off this evening in saying that this is a much more positive approach to what we wish for or what we not only wish for, what we have said we were going to do in our, in our school district. So I think that it is, if we're going to talk semantics, I am happy to use vision.
Great. I think we're in a consensus on that, so that's terrific. Other comments or questions? Someone want to make a motion?
Well, I think I need, I'll be happy to make a motion, but I want to make sure that, it seems like to me that there's a little piece more that we, that we haven't discussed as far as wording the motion. Mike has made the suggestion that it will be much stronger for the city council if we have, if we, the school committee, are actually proposing the override. Rather than the motion being, we, we support the parents.
Right. We can make either motion. I, I agree with your analysis. So do we, do we want to debate the merits of which of those or?
Well, I'd like to hear a little bit more about what that means, Mike, when we put it that way. Mayor Mike, if we, if we word it, that, if we word a motion that the school committee, how did you say it, request the city council to?
Place a debt exclusion question on the November ballot to support the school budget.
Okay.
Debt exclusion?
Not an exclusion, it's an override. I'm sorry. If I said exclusion, I apologize. Override.
Okay. And, and how, in wording it that way, what, what is that saying to the city council?
That you want to get a ballot question.
Okay, and that's it.
That's really what you're asking at this point.
Okay.
The motion that will be, the, the language on the ballot is already prescribed in law. I believe this question will require a definitive number. The, the debt exclusion did not. And so the question couldn't have a dollar amount. This one, I believe, has to have a dollar amount. And then in the, in the course of promoting a yes vote, people that are doing that are going to need to know the benefits of that cost.
Right, right.
That sort of thing. So I, I think that the reason that I would suspect that it would be stronger from the school committee is yours, that we are, we, we are the elected representatives of the school operation here. And so if anyone's going to be asking for more money, it ought to be the school committee. Because I love it when parents are involved and thank you very much, but they don't know the situation. Not the way that the school committee knows it and they aren't responsible for it, the way the school committee's responsible for it. It would, it would sort of be like, you know, my neighbor asking for a, a debt exclusion or an override for the police department because he'd like to see a, a cop car on our street. Yeah, that's a wonderful idea, but what do you know about where the police are? Keep going down that road.
Yeah.
So I really think the school committee should be asking. I, I think it'll be much, a much better way to approach the city. to approach the city council.
Okay.
Remember too, that once we make a motion, there can be additional, if a motion is made, if a motion's seconded, there can be additional, additional questions and conversation. So it doesn't lock you down once a motion is made.
Well, I move that the school committee request of our city council an override to support the vision of the school committee's budget. Did I get all of it in there?
The school committee's budget?
Could we revise that slightly?
Yes, please.
I had a suggestion. Say the end again, request...
I move that the school committee make a request of our city council for an override to support the vision...
For our schools.
For our schools.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion that's seconded. Does anyone want to comment on the motion as it's praised?
When does this have to happen? If I understand it, it's like sometime between now and nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
I, I...
Not quite.
My sense is that...
Tomorrow's Wednesday, right?
Tomorrow's Wednesday.
Because we ended today.
Oh, oh, thanks, Mike.
My call.
I think that if a motion is made, seconded and voted this evening, that that motion by itself allows us to go to the city clerk tomorrow. Correct me if I'm wrong about this, Mike.
I will go to the city clerk with a memo.
Right, asking...
Superintendent of the motion voted by Sunday.
Right, asking to be on the May 2nd.
Sue, take care of that.
No, what you'd be doing is asking them to, to do an override question.
Right.
And on May 2nd, they would simply send, I mean, people could come to Citizen Speak Time, we could go as a school committee and speak at Citizen Speak Time. What will happen on the 2nd is it will get referred to a committee. There won't, there won't be a big discussion about it at that meeting.
Right, so to come back then to Ms. Smith's question at the, in the public speak section, this then would allow them to move, were this measure, motion, to pass, it would allow them to continue to organize in support of the recommendation that the school committee is making to the city council, correct? Right, but that's, in terms of what do they need to do next? They don't need to do anything next then between now and tomorrow. We would essentially be moving the piece forward in terms of...
Well, and we would be the, we, to be honest, we would be carrying the flag. I mean, they, the parents group should be there to support, be there to organize that, that political action group that needs to happen.
Right.
But it really would become a school committee sell. I mean, we'd have to, the members of the school committee are going to have to commit to this, at least to move it through the process. Because it really should be the school committee and the city council deciding to put a ballot question.
Correct.
To the voters, that's...
Right, I'm trying to answer the question more completely that was earlier tonight in the public speak, of what they take away from the room.
The knowledge that at least to get the question on the ballot, the school committee's going to be the legs and very supportive, and they're going to be the assistants. And then once it, once they get the, I don't want to say once, because then they have to start the fundraising side in the first two months, so that in the last two months, they have enough money to make the sell.
Right.
Because August, November is a very short period of time.
Right. But we accomplish the mission of moving it forward towards the prospect of being approved by the city council for being put on the ballot.
Yeah, and I think we take ownership of lobbying the city council.
Okay.
I mean, I really do. It's not just us saying, listen to these folks, we're, I think we, we take ownership. Superintendent Andy's, I mean, I think people get involved from the school side and from the school committee to be the legs to convince city council and to get some of the, the beginning of that information out. We aren't going to package the, the get out the vote effort, that's going to be this, this question committee. But I think we need to package, the city councilors understand this is what we want, and we want to ask the voter. We have to package that. So that the councilors understand what we're asking the voters, so that they can be confident about saying, yes, we're going to put that question on the ballot.
Correct. Thank you very much. So one of my, one of the questions that occurs to me is, as, you know, in effect, we would need an ad hoc subcommittee of people who would be willing to attend city council meetings, both for purposes of speaking in public speak. We might be called, we might also then attend the meetings of the subcommittee that it is designated to. So there's going to need to be a commitment from members here on this committee by voting yes on this motion to being the people who show up and do that. And that's in addition to all of the normal things that we're already doing. And I'm hopeful that people are willing to do that, but I want to be, be sure that we all understand that if we put our hands up and say yes, we're putting our hands up for more than saying yes, we're putting our hands up to say, yes, I'll go do that. And I think that's, that's really, really important for people to be, to be aware of and committed to. So if there's, if there's hesitation about the ability to do that, we are short-staffed because it's a busy, it's a busy time for lots of us, staffed isn't the right word, but it's been some time since we've had a meeting with a full quorum, so, I mean, a full attendance. So I think we need to be aware of that. I'm sort of waiting for somebody to say, I'm excited to do this, and I'm really looking forward to being a point person on it.
I'm willing to help out if somebody else says they will too, but I'm waiting for that person. But, so this is, this part of it is truly, if I'm understanding correctly, is getting it through the city council. And then, are we able to ask the parents, like, so then we'll say, okay, parents, we did it, here you go.
Well, I don't think we ever stop.
And I, I understand that, I do understand that.
And I think they're actually a part of what we're doing as well, but they're just not the face.
Yeah.
Right.
And then I think the face does change.
Yeah. See, I like the symbol of waving the flag. I'm not real big on the symbol of my legs moving. When you say being the legs, but I get it. I get that we can't vote yes on this unless we are moving. Unless, it's not just a vote of yes. It calls for action, right.
Right, and I think we need to be aware that that's a, that that's, I mean, you know, I just, I'm... I've spoken to the question before.
It's five or six meetings, I mean, it...
Yep.
Don't, don't get that scared about it.
No, I'm not.
It's five or six city council meetings at the most, I think. And then whatever other meetings you have to have, we have, the body has to have, or individuals have to have in order to figure out what they want to say, and superintendent's got a lot of work, and the superintendent's going to end up being, or someone from the school, someone from school administration at every one of those five or six city council meetings where it's going to be discussed. Because that's, that's really the, I think that's the knowledge they're going to want to draw out is really going to be from, from the staff, from the superintendent, is how is this going to work? You know, what, what is that vision? Why? You know, why do you need world languages in the middle school? I mean, you know, those kinds of questions that we are going to be, oh, because it's great, and whatever.
Middle and elementary school.
And why would, no, I... See, that's why I shouldn't be the one to say it.
No, I get it.
And I happily accept that responsibility, and I'm sure that, absolutely positive that my administrators will happily accept it along with me.
Well...
All right.
And then I would just reemphasize things that I've said before, and I'm trying to reemphasize them as briefly as possible. I was struck when I read the article this morning in the paper about our consideration this evening, because I, I want to emphasize two things. One, that whatever we want to say, and I, I'm not dismissive at all of the importance of, of the semantics, but I, but I do believe that we need to be concerned about the education that the students experience in the second half of next year, if not in the fall, because we can't get there then. So I'm committed to the idea of putting a budget override question before the voters because of that, as well as because of its role in making more possible, you know, a long-term realization of goals that we have talked about, education, technology. We know that we face a technology challenge, it was eloquently spoken to in the last meeting, about already how productive our technology department has to be right now to serve the needs and of the, of a community. So I see the budget override as being valuable both now and going forward in the future. I think the fact that this enthusiasm originates with, you know, with parents and children who, you know, are enjoying the growth of the quality of public education that we provide in this city, and that we can begin to turn around, what is it, $1.5 million reduction from two years ago, if we don't turn it around, is tremendous, right? So I, I'm, I'm excited to endorse the idea. I hope that we have a unanimous vote in favor of this recommendation of the city council, and that we're ready to roll up our shirt sleeves and spend some time in the summer, when we might otherwise, you know, be, be involved in other things. It's going to be a real sacrifice, and I think that we have to show that in order to make it work for the, for the community. Other comments? Call the question.
Call the question, let's raise these hands.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Thank you. Okay, terrific. So we will move forward. Let me know, I can stop by in person as well, Nan, Nancy, I'm really doing a good job with this. Sue, I can stop by, yep, I can stop by in the morning and say hello to the city clerk once you're getting that, just to be sure that I'm refreshed on the procedure as we, as we go forward. Okay, so then we have matters for discussion, and we have one member who will be departing now.
The way you said that.
Something we said?
She has to leave, important engagement. Not really the case.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance Subcommittee.
There is nothing to report from the Finance Subcommittee.
Policy Review Subcommittee.
Nothing to report. So I did talk to Nancy about our next meeting, and she felt, she's meeting with the Wellness Committee and felt that it would be best to have our next meeting after she meets with the Wellness Committee. Because we will be talking about the wellness policy.
Super. Thank you. CS update?
Nothing to report.
Great, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
And as you know, the, I think you mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, we were going to have the, we, the people, students here and Kelly Brown, but we received a message this morning that they weren't going to be able to be here this evening. So we'll eagerly await their return from Washington DC, along with our chair, Peter Gunn. And I look forward to hearing a report about that when they get back.
And they're gone from when to when?
They leave Friday at 10:00, and they'll return Tuesday afternoon. I forget when, I'm, I'm coming back in the morning, so I don't know what the return flight is. But they're going to be, they're going to be busy, very, very busy. I've done that with my own students, and it is, it's not a field trip. It's a full-on, hard work, gut-wrenching, intellectually challenging, extraordinary enterprise. And these nine folks who are going, and Kelly Brown are going to really represent East Hampton and Massachusetts amazingly well. I know that Nancy has witnessed a lot of their work, and has worked very hard. I know that Kelly is, and the students have been very appreciative of the work that Nancy Sykes has done, that the work that Mike Engel has done, a former city official who's come back and generously spent time there, and, you know, there was an event at the spaghetti, I'm going to call it spaghetti supper for lack of a better term, last, was it just last week it seemed like?
Yeah.
And they did an amazing job of handling questions from people throughout the community. And it's really incredible, because every now and then, they say they're in 10th grade or 11th grade, there's, I think, only, is it two seniors?
Three.
Three out of the nine, but you would think that they're all college sophomores. It's really inspiring, so I hope you have a good trip.
So Peter, we hope that you'll keep us updated while you're away.
Oh, I'll blog the whole time, I'm sure.
Well, a few emails, a couple texts.
Yeah, I don't text, but you'll be able to feel the spirit. Somebody will, somebody, yeah, they're savvy on that.
All right, thank you.
All right.
So next on my report is Andy Paquette with Results of Operations, as of 3/31/2012.
Sorry, Andy. Thought I was going to duck it, since you skipped over me, but that's all right. First of all, I do want to say something regarding the budget Subcommittee meeting that we had and the handouts and the lovely summary that was done. I did talk to Nancy and said, verified indeed that, in my haste to get it to you, I went, it was the easiest way to do the sort, when we export the information from the accounting system, to sort it by account code, and there are clearly account codes that are not lined up as far as salary versus operating expenses. So I have a revised one that, after I sit with Nancy to go over, we will provide it to you that does reconcile with the supporting documentation of the salary versus operating expenses, so. So that one was the correct one. So my apologies regarding that. Regarding the updates as of March 31st, we are noticing, which I think will be beneficial, and fingers crossed everything continues on, we are trending better than budget in several areas, primarily even the heating in the utilities are looking very healthy. Knock on wood for the warm weather and the energy efficient changes that have been made, district-wide, city-wide for that matter. So as of, from the last time, we're looking at an additional between $15,000 and $100,000 that we'll be rolling over into next year to help out the FY13 budget. We have some things that could eat into that regarding some special education-related expenses of some move-ins and sending students out, but it is still looking favorably along those ends. Just to give you a food service update, as far as the way things are going, the RFPs are going to be posted with the goal of the end of this week, so that the proposals will be out public for any vendors interested in bidding. And the operations-wise, actually, we are running favorite, believe it or not, in the last month, we only had a $1,900 loss compared to what was projected to be, if you were to look at the month from the budget, was to be about a between a three and 400, three and $4,000 loss, so that's favorite, so we're actually, if you remember from one of the last updates, and I have asked for another of those four-page summaries, if you remember, it was, we were off of budget from the budget to actual, we're going back and trending towards meeting the budget. So as of right now, we're looking with the $20,000 that we have budgeted in the local budget, the $5,000 around there that they gave us for not meeting the budget from last year, we're looking at needing maybe $15,000 of school choice funds to fund the deficit, all things being equal, as of June 30th, for the school lunch program. So that's good news. But other than that, can I answer any questions?
Were there some changes made in the school choice income statement? Looked like there's...
What we do is we start to update that as far as what we're projecting the, to use for expenses because of these changes that are going on in the local operating, and also December 31st, and any changes that were made in the school choice receiving, you know, as far as adjusting what it is that we're going to be getting in FY12. From the cherry sheet number, when the budget was passed, they do a revision as of December, and so we, we try and update that as the changes occur.
The numbers that I, there was just, a number missing in the center school line, which is increasing the bottom line.
That's because we don't need to use that.
Okay.
So that's, you know, as far as the, when we are, when we're saving money in the, I say saving, in the, in the local, the school committee budget, that is less that we need to use out of the school choice, so that we'll be able to use that in next year. So I make the adjustments in the school choice income statement as, as we feel more confident in the numbers of what it is that we actually need.
And the reason for not needing it?
Is the things like the heating and the savings that we're recognizing in the operations.
Because the budget will eventually go away.
That's true.
You're only, you're only allowed to hold that for a certain period after, two fiscal years?
Two fiscal years, yes, you know, the holdovers, correct. And so if, if the budget's expended and the money stays in the choice accounts, clearly, we can use that money in future years, and it doesn't go away until we spend it.
Other questions? Sorry.
Thank you, Andy.
You can send us that email, Andy, when you find $690,000. You can send us that email, Andy, when you find $690,000.
Got it.
Now it's only $550, right?
Oh, I, well, a little extra won't hurt.
We have a copy, there are matters of action, we have a copy of the school calendar draft number five. Nancy, would you speak to that?
It's actually number six.
Six. I apologize. That was quick.
We went through a number of iterations. We had the school calendar number five, the union looked at it, members of the EEA gave suggestions, we brought it back to leadership team, we incorporated some of their suggestions and made some compromises. And then it was in your packet, and I got a call, I guess it was Monday, from the high school saying that the AP exams were going to be scheduled for the 20th of May, or 13th of May, the two weeks, the 13th, the week, sorry, the 13th of May and the week of the 20th.
Twenty-one.
Right, so the 24th are AP exams. And so could we please, or through the 23rd, please not have a professional development day in that space of time? So we made the arrangements to change that to the 24th, and that's why you have draft number six.
All right.
Thank you.
What is the election on Thursday, September 6?
Oh, sorry.
Is that a primary?
No.
The sixth.
I believe it is a primary.
It's a primary.
These states were given to the city clerk.
Right.
They're running the front term, so.
And we made them no school days.
That changed, that was changed several times. The mayor can probably tell you. Sure.
And it's important for me to make a comment about that also. The teachers' union asked me if I would, you know, make sure that I let the community and parents know that those are two days with out-school for students, and the 11th, 6th and the 11th, 11th, right? No, yes, no.
Six and then.
Sorry, the 6th.
And the 3rd.
November 6th, right. Because we've been asked to not have the schools open for students then for safety reasons, and also because with the high school construction, it would be very difficult to have school and people coming in and out for elections. So we've made those no-school days for students.
So this begs a history question, Mike, because I know that other communities use other spaces, and I bet you that we don't have any, but to the extent that it's at all disruptive to the school year, has East Hampton ever had their elect, their polling places other than the public schools?
Well, we used to actually never be in the public schools, but we, none of our other spaces were accessible.
Right.
Oh, I take that back. We were in the elementaries.
Right, okay.
We had, I think, three precincts. I'm trying to go back as far as I remember voting. I don't think we had five voting precincts, I think we had three. Town Hall was one location. I believe Maple was another, and I don't recall the third, it may have been another school. The reason that they're in schools now, though, is handicap access. When the handicap access laws came into effect, we needed to find space where there was accessibility.
Right.
I don't think, you know, unless the schools decide that they don't want voting to be held in their buildings, I don't think that there are logical other locations in East Hampton.
That's, I just wanted people to hear that, because I think it comes up periodically, because people in other places, you know, and my own personal wishes that we would vote on Saturday or Sunday, have it be a holiday for everybody, so that it isn't just disruptive for, you know, for parents who have to, you know, voting is just one part of what, for them is probably a normal workday, and to suddenly have their children not be able to go to school creates all sorts of, you know, management issues at that end, as well as the changes in the daily, I mean, in the school calendar, so.
I believe as a Western state, they let you to vote for about two weeks in lots of different ways.
Yeah, yep, well, I think that innovation is coming, so.
Can you just point out how exciting April 22nd, 2013 will be?
Yes, isn't it exciting to see it on the calendar?
High school move-in day.
Oh, my God, I just saw that.
Yes, well, so actually, they, we will. We'll move everything from the old building that's going to be moved into the new building, and all of the teachers, you know, personal effects and so forth, will be moved during April vacation. And then we've given the teachers the 22nd as a move-in day for the high school teachers, professional development for elementary and middle school teachers, so that they can get their rooms organized and be ready for the kids to be there on the 23rd.
How exciting.
It is, it's very exciting, just so wonderful.
Minutes?
Oh, we need to vote.
Oh, vote on calendar, sorry, yes, thank you.
I move to accept the East Hampton Public Schools 2012 through 2013 school calendar draft number six.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes.
Move to approve the school, excuse me, move to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting on April 10th, 2012.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Move to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting budget work session on April 17th, 2012.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye.
Can I abstain?
Did you get Lori's abstentions on this? Thanks. Of course, I just get that stuff. I don't want to.
Move to approve the school payroll dated April 19th, 2012 in the amount of $472,536.83.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the school payroll dated 19 April 2012 in the amount of $472,536.83. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated April 19th, 2012 in the amount of $309,974.93.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 19 April 2012 in the amount of $309,974.93. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
That is it.
I'll entertain another motion.
We have a request for leave.
Oh, sorry. I almost forgot about that. Yes. Can you speak today?
I received a request for a second year's leave of absence from David Lochman. Last year, the school committee granted him a one-year's leave of absence to travel to Mongolia and work in special education in schools in Mongolia. And he's requested a second leave, year's leave of absence. I'm not recommending a second year's leave of absence. We have not done that in the past, and most importantly, I think it's in the best interests of our students if we have continuity in the teachers who are in our district, in the positions that we've hired them for.
Remove the request to not be approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to not approve the request for leave for a second year. Is there further discussion? Clarification? Yes?
I just have one question. The only thing we have speaking to this is his request.
Yes.
I mean, he didn't write any more than what.
What you're saying.
What we're saying.
That's right, that's right. And we had asked that he give us his answer by April 2nd, so his answer is late and coming, and we just received it, as you can see, April 14th.
Any other questions, clarification? Motion made, motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Signatures?
Yes. Good evening, folks. Thank you, Andy.